I'd like to call today's meeting to order. A special board meeting on November 20th, 2027. Mike, first item?
Under public communications, no one is registered to speak. Finance Bond Resolution 2017-16: Sale of General Obligation Bond Refunding Bonds. On November 4th, 2008, USD 259 voters approved a $370 million bond issue. Bonds are to be issued for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of the following within the district. One, constructing, furnishing, and equipping new schools. Two, upgrading, repairing, replacing, constructing, and equipping secondary technical education, physical education, athletic, fine arts, and special program facilities at schools. Three, improving safety and security of schools. Four, remodeling, renovating, improving, equipping, construction additions to demolishing and rebuilding schools. Five, acquiring and improving sites. Six, making all other necessary improvements appertinent thereto. And seven, paying fees, costs, and expenses incidental to the bond project. Today's agenda item provides for the adoption of a Resolution 2017-16 authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding bonds. Proceeds of the refunding bonds will be used to refinance a portion of the district's outstanding bonds to achieve interest cost savings on future debt payments. It is recommended the board approve the adoption of Resolution 2017-16 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Offering for Sale of General Obligation Refunding Bonds of USD 259, Sedgwick County, Kansas, Wichita. The resolution is provided in Appendix 1.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, President Roddy, Vice President Arnold, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the Board. As we discussed last Friday, the district has an opportunity to look today at the possibility of offering an advanced refund on one of the bond issues. The expediency of the request is driven in part by the federal tax reform bills currently running through both the House and the Senate. I believe the House has passed their version and the Senate is working on theirs. I wanted to provide the Board an opportunity to ask more pointed questions today, so I did invite Kim Bell with Gilmore Bell and Steve Shogren with George K. Baum, and I've asked them to give a short presentation to the Board as to the viability of what we're asking the Board to consider and the reasons why. So I'll pass it to them, and then I'll have another item for the Board to consider at the end of their presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am Kim Bell with Gilmore and Bell, the district's bond counsel, and I thought I would just sort of give you a little background on what you've done and where we are, and then Steve Shogren is here with George K. Baum and company, and he can speak to the numbers and the projected savings. As Susan mentioned, there is, and I'm sure you're aware, pending tax legislation in Congress right now. There are a lot of differences between the House and the Senate bills, but one item that they have in common is that they will prohibit advanced refunding of bonds after January 1, 2018. An advanced refunding, all of your bonds, when you issue the bonds, have a prepayment or a call date, and when you hit that call date, then you can either pay them off with cash or issue new refunding bonds and use the proceeds to pay off the outstanding bonds. You would do this if interest rates dropped and you could have a savings. An advanced refunding is where you do the same thing, but your bonds are not callable yet. So you take the proceeds of your new refunding bonds and you escrow them with a trustee, you set them aside to pay the bonds when you hit their call or prepayment date, and then you move forward with your new bonds. George K. Baum has reviewed your outstanding debt, and they have a proposal to refund your Series 2010 Build America bonds. Those were issued under the 2009 reinvestment legislation. There was a limited amount of time when we could issue Build America bonds, and the way they're different from your regular bonds is that they were issued at a taxable rate, and the government provides you with a subsidy for your interest payments. That subsidy was originally 35%, but due to sequestration, it has been reduced over the years, and there is always a possibility that it could continue to be reduced. So the decision tonight, or this afternoon for the Board, is whether to proceed with an advanced refunding of these 2010 Build America bonds. They're not callable until 2020, so we would have to do it as an advanced refunding. And if this legislation passes and you are prohibited as of January to issue advanced refunding bonds, we would have to get this done by the end of the year. So that's why we're on a very quick time schedule and why we've asked you for a special meeting, which we really appreciate. The resolution in front of you does several things. It hires George K. Baum as an underwriter for the bond issue. It authorizes George K. Baum and Gilmore and Bell to proceed with an offering and sale of the bonds, and that will include drafting all of the relevant bond documents by our firm. It will include preparation of an offering document, which George K. Baum will assist with, going to rating agencies to get a rating, and ultimately marketing the bonds. If they are able to do that and achieve what we would consider to be a floor or a threshold level of savings, which is 3% savings, then we could come back and the President would be authorized to execute a bond purchase agreement and lock in those rates. Then we would come back to the full Board on your meeting on December 11th for consideration of a bond resolution. After that, we would take the bonds to the Attorney General for approval, and we would close sometimes prior to the end of the year. I will let Steve speak to the projected interest rates and savings on the bond issue, and then if you have any additional questions, we'll be happy to try and answer them.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, Superintendent Thompson, Steve Shogren, Senior Vice President with George K. Baum and Company. We have been proud to work with USD 259. Our relationship started in about 1999. We were the banker on the first $284-plus-million bond issue approved by voters in 2000, and then subsequently, we were also retained to be the banker on the $370 million bond issue, also approved by voters in 2008. As was indicated by Kim Bell, we hope there is an opportunity here. There is a window. The window is closing, we're afraid, and we didn't anticipate that. Really didn't anticipate this advanced refunding end might be part of the legislation, but today it is, and we think it's got a good chance that that may be part of the final tax reform bill. So the opportunity to advance refund may be closing shortly, December 31st. We think we have enough time to accomplish this goal on an advanced refunding. If not, the bonds would not be callable or refundable until 2020, and who knows where interest rates will be at that point in time and whether it'd be cost-effective. Basically, these are the $100 million bond, Series 2010B. As Kim said, they're the Build America bonds. They were issued as taxable bonds with a federal subsidy. The interest rate with that subsidy, you are paying approximately 3.58% on those bonds. We think the tax-exempt market today could produce a net interest cost, or a true interest cost with all costs affiliated, a very near 2% on the refunding. The bonds are not very long out through 2025. We would propose a crossover refunding structure to maintain and protect your subsidy on the bonds until they're callable in 2020. We've done some other refundings in Kansas on Build America bonds in the same manner and feel comfortable with that. If we can market the bonds, and that is a big if, at approximately a true interest cost of 2%, the gross savings, the cash-on-cash savings, is estimated at $5,477,475. Present value is the value of a future cash flow stream correlated as if you had the dollars in the bank today and could reinvest at the bond rate. The present value is $4,422,300. That's easy to calculate on a $100 million bond issue. It's 4.42%. Industry standards, there are refundings done at 2%, some have a target. I think the industry standard nationwide is we look for a minimum of 3% present value savings to consider this type of transaction, and this is above that, and that's why we recommend your consideration of such a transaction. Usually, these processes take about 60 days. You're probably pretty good with calendars. We don't have 60 days before the end of the year, so we're going to need to expedite. Our staff is already starting to gather information to prepare the offering document, which is a preliminary official statement. It's a complex document, and then the first step would be to submit that to a rating agency or rating agencies, Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's. Our trading desk would like both, but we don't want to slow down the process. I think we'll submit it to both, but we'll work with the one that can give us the best turnaround on a rating. When we receive that rating, then we'll run the numbers again. We'll come back to your administration and share where the savings is, if it meets the target, and if it does such, we would enter the market, sell the bonds, achieve the savings, and come back to the Board with a resolution to issue the bonds, and the transaction would close between Christmas and New Year's this year. We're excited about it. We've always enjoyed working with this school district. Proud to be the banker for the largest and best school district in the state of Kansas, and so we're excited to go forward, but we are concerned a little bit, this is new to the marketplace, and people that were perhaps anticipating doing advanced refundings in '18 or '19 now may be entering the market here, just as we are, to take advantage of this opportunity before the law changes. So there is some concern if there's a glut of bonds in the marketplace in December that it may hurt our marketability. That's why we ask for a little fudge factor, so to speak, of not less than 3% present value savings, where the savings today is more than 4% on these bonds. I'd be glad to answer questions you may have. Yes, ma'am?
So my understanding then is today it's just about approving your going forward and seeing if there is a market for this?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And if there is, I mean, we'd find out something, and then we would proceed with the meeting in December. Did we do this before on the Build America bond?
Yes, you did, on the issuance of the bonds. Just to clarify, Ms. Arnold, if you authorize this, then we would work with your administration to see if it works and not require another meeting to approve. If it works, we're authorized by this resolution to move forward, and then we'd come back. Your next meeting and final meeting would be a meeting to authorize the issuance resolution of the bonds and authorize the closing to take place, hopefully two weeks later.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to kind of refresh my memory a little bit. I thought we had gone through this process before. In the past, you have done resolutions that are very similar to this, where you authorize your consultants and staff to go forward and see if they can actually negotiate a refunding that will set a certain threshold, and if they meet the threshold, then the President's authorized to sign the bond purchase agreement. We're authorized to proceed. If they don't meet the threshold, then nothing happens. We're done.
If we can't hit the target, we will not market the bonds. We'll not enter the bonds in the marketplace. We have a contract with you, so to speak, to meet that minimum threshold as to savings of 3% present value, and so if the markets fluctuate, volume supply exceeds demand, and we can't meet that target, we will let your administration, no one, in fact, will come back to a board meeting and explain why the transaction is not going to work at this time.
And I just wanted to establish we were not in uncharted waters. We've done this before, so, yes.
We've probably done, I think, we've probably done, I'd say, 10, 11, or 12 transactions for the district in the issuance of those bonds, not only authorized in 2000, but in 2008, both new money issuances and refunding issuance very similar to this, where the Board gave us authority. If we hit a target, then the President could adopt a bond purchase agreement, and we'd come back to the Board with final authority to schedule closing on the bonds at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn?
I think, as we mentioned, this is probably the fourth or fifth time we've done a refinancing, maybe even sixth time that we've done this, and again, I think the structure has always been set so that there is some flexibility because the bond market can move so quickly and change. The cost for doing this is built into the purchase price of the bonds, is it not?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, this won't let us do any more building projects. It really just reduces how much taxpayers will have to pay back. So this $5 million of estimated savings is really the reduction of bond payments or the interest portion of the bond payments until these Build America bonds are paid off. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're not going to deposit $5 million in your bank account. We're going to reduce your obligation in the repayment of principal and interest on the bonds.
And I think as we talked Friday, that could be up to a quarter of a percent on the bill levy. Again, that's a lot of things that go into factor with that, with assessed value.
I calculated this. In the years, these bonds, '22 through '25, my estimate, based on your current assessed valuation, state aid, your state, the state of Kansas is going to benefit from this reduction also, but it's .28 tenths, 2/8 hundredths of 1 mil is my best estimate as to really.
And I guess my guess is we've probably refinanced several hundred million of the bonds over time in terms of savings, and so this $5 million really, we've lowered our interest rate for the taxpayers tremendously, and so this $5 million is just, I mean, I don't know, would you have any kind of a guess as to what all of the refinancings have saved?
I looked, because that had been requested previously. I think the refundings we've done previous to date reduced principal and interest payments by over $8 million previously. So this is, I think this is the best transaction of the bunch that we've done. All of them are valid and effective, but this should give total savings from refundings to over $13 million on an estimate.
Particularly with the subsidy possibly going away, you know, with tax reform and everything too. So the bond rating, this will be the first time that we've gone in for a bond rating since the state of Kansas bond ratings have gone back up after, you know, last year's legislative session. The state bonding rating does affect ours as well, does it not, in terms of how they view repayment and things? I mean, most of it's on our financials, but they do take into consideration the state as well, do they not?
Yeah, in my opinion, the state's uncertainty has not hurt local issuers. You're a AA or a AA II, which is the equivalent.
We're always much higher.
And that has not gone down, even though the states had some challenges. They look, these bonds are considered very safe and secure. The unlimited taxing ability of the district to tax and collect taxes to meet this obligation makes it a very strong pledge. Kansas bonds are very well-respected in the national marketplace, and even with the state's uncertainty. I think if they ever perhaps had a challenge in meeting their state aid obligation on your bonds, that would be a different factor and perhaps hurt your local rating on these bonds. But thus far, that's not happening. We think Wichita schools, in some ways, is stronger than the state of Kansas.
Well, we've been glad for that. And I guess the final thing I want to say is that I'm glad that we have this option to do this. I think taking it away under the Federal Tax Reform Act is very misguided. You know, it will really cost local governments a lot of money in the future, and while it's going to save the federal government, because they're going to, all of a sudden, bonds are going to be, all of them will be taxable is how they're viewing it, it's to pay for their other tax cuts and things like that. So I think it's very misguided, and I hope our federal senators and legislators understand what this is doing. I mean, this is a great thing for us now, but to limit us forever and all other school districts from doing this, I think is very, very short-sighted. So the other question I guess maybe have of our staff is, do we need to look at any other advisors on this in terms of making sure that we're doing the right thing for our district?
I think that's a recommendation we would support, given the extremely tight timeline and the fact that staff are basically out of the building for three of the next six weeks, to have an independent third-party review of the transactions, how this is structured, to make sure that all the Ts are being crossed and we're getting what we need out of this refund. I think we would recommend that.
And do other government agencies do that? We've not necessarily done that in the past, but, I mean, as I stated, this is a larger amount. Who else has done that, and how does that work?
I think the company that we would be looking at is a company by the name of Springstead Incorporated. They're a public sector advisor headquartered out of Minnesota, but have done work in Kansas for the past 30 years. They specifically have assisted the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County as their financial advisor on their bond issues. So they've got a lot of local experience. They have a lot of state experience, and they can act independently of both the bond counsel and the bond underwriter.
Okay. And what does that do for us then at that point?
I think what we gain out of that is certainly looking at our overall debt structure to determine how do we, do we want the same timeframe for these refunded bonds? Do we want to extend the life out? Kind of depending on what our long-term plans are. I think there's things we need to look at with our overall debt, and I think a financial advisor gives us that full-picture advice instead of just specifically, we want them to look at this one in particular, given the timeline, but I think we gain some ground too, is looking at that comprehensive review of our debt.
Okay. I guess a couple of follow-up questions. One for bond counsel and George K. Baum. Have you worked with a company or companies like that before, and how does that interact with how you guys operate?
We have worked with Springstead on a number of issues throughout the state, and they are always very helpful in reviewing structuring and interest rates and just making sure that all of your needs are met, and they're a very reputable company. As I said, they work throughout the state, and we deal with them quite a bit.
And that would be a separate cost from our bonds and things of that nature, would it not?
It's a separate cost, but it is paid in the same structure through the bond.
Through the bonds, so, okay. And typically, they could also, that could help us save some additional money as well if they see something that we're missing or we don't have the expertise for, so.
Right. It's actually considered a best practice from the GFOA as well to have a financial advisor that's independent help you, especially if you don't have that in-house expertise to look at bonds, and while we have our internal legal counsel, we only have so many weeks to look at this, you know, live, so to speak. So I think, I really do think it would be to our best interest to have the Board authorize staff to negotiate a contract with Springstead.
Okay. Well, I guess I would make two motions.
Tom?
Mr. Rogers?
Oh, yes.
I would have one other suggestion, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Steve or Kim about this, but I think if we're going to involve Springstead under the portion of this resolution that talks about the parameters that have to be met for us to go forward with the transaction, I would, I think I would like to have the 3% removed and put in there that it's recommended by our financial advisor.
And where is that?
Is that in Section 1 at the end?
That's page 2, Section 1 at the bottom.
Right. Okay.
Tom, did you want to leave the 3% in and add a new requirement?
Yeah, I mean, I'd prefer to move it out, because one of the things that Susan is bringing up is if we would decide to restructure our bonds, it might actually be less than 3%, but might, because of the advantage of restructuring, might be something we'd want to do, go forward with. You know, I don't know at this time, but that's just one thought that we've had.
So if we could say on that one, at the end of the third line up from, which says refunding bonds shall not be less than 3% or upon, or the recommendation of the financial advisor, or something of that nature?
I think so. That'd be, and the recommendation, maybe, because that way it'd have to be both, and that, maybe that's one way to do it.
All right. In that regard, then, I would make a motion that we take the recommended action with the addition of, on Section 1, bottom paragraph, bottom of the paragraph on Page 2, first paragraph on Page 2, that we add, and the financial advisor, again, giving flexibility to our staff and the bond counsel and George K. Baum, that we phrase that to what they're comfortable with, so that we can take the recommended action.
I have a motion by Lynn and a second by Betty. Is there any other further discussion?
Cheryl.
Are you ready to vote?
I have, I have.
Okay, Cheryl?
First of all, I would like to thank our bond counsel and attorneys and our own staff for the hard work that this is taking, because I realize you're doing something that normally you do over 60 days in literally less than 30. So I know that that's putting extra burdens on you and your staff, so thank you for doing that, because I think it's worth it to our community if we can save them $4 million. My question on the financial advisor, because that's, I can't see that that's in this resolution anywhere. Do we need to have a resolution to hire them?
What I would suggest, after you take this motion, that you do a separate motion and authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Springstead and bring it back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. Then my question is, on the meeting in December, the December 11th meeting, because it sounds like you all are going to work very quickly and have these issued, and in the December 11th meeting, our role as a Board would be to look at your work and then approve it? Tell me what we need to do on December 11th, I guess is my question.
It's my understanding that you actually authorize the sale of the bond.
On the 11th?
So that's what you'll do. All the preparatory work will be done here in the next three weeks, and so that hopefully on the 11th, we're ready with a proposal for you to approve to sell the bonds. If we're not, then we might need to look at a special meeting a little later that week.
Okay. So on the 11th, we would be approving selling the bonds because the Springsteen organization would have been able to look at it as well as everybody else and get it ready to go, correct?
If I might. What you will do is essentially you'll be ratifying the sale, because hopefully we will have had a bond purchase agreement signed and those rates locked in. So you'll be ratifying and approving the sale. The bond resolution will also authorize the execution of myriad of documents that are necessary in order to get the bonds issued, and will authorize the actual issuance of the bonds.
Okay. So between now and December 11th, when we all see you again, you're going to actually issue those proposals for bonds and have somebody that takes them, hopefully?
Hopefully, assuming we get cooperation from the rating agencies, that's the biggest one. We've got kind of a key holiday coming up.
Yes.
And so, and they, I'm sure they're getting requests to review other proposals, other marketed or other planned marketings of securities. So, you know, we're not on their calendar yet. We're hoping to get a POS put together in the next couple of days and get CAFR sent to them to review. They'll assign analysts to that, and ideally, they will require an interview with the district to ask questions of your financial and the economics of the community, et cetera, to provide their justification for the rating they assign. I'm hopeful that we can get that perhaps a week before the 11th and market the first week in December. Can I promise it? That's beyond our controls to a certain degree. If not, we're hoping that at the worst-case scenario, that we could market the week of the 11th, which may require another subsequent special meeting of the Board to approve the issuance of the bonds. But basically, you ratify that issuance. If we've successfully marketed the bonds, we lock in those buyers of the securities by getting the Board President to sign a bond purchase agreement, and then our trading desk can confirm and lock in the transaction to close before December 31st.
Well, you all must really be good, because that's awfully fast to make that many organizations work. So thank you very much for your work.
We're going to try our best. We're going to try our best. We're hopeful, we think it can be accomplished, but it takes the cooperation of other people to make it happen.
Stan, did you?
Yes, real quick. Kim and Steve, you'd mentioned that there's the possibility of a glut. Do you have a probability that a glut could do to the 4.422 percent savings?
Well, that's what, today, we basically asked our trading desk, they know your district well. We've marketed a lot of bonds for you. We are, we, as a company, do probably on average two issues a day, marketing-wise, so we know the market, we know where it's at. These numbers reflect where the market was last week. And if, you know, if rates go up because we've got to increase yields because of that supply and demand problem, or different factors in the market, there's one thing that you can count on, that's the market will change. It rarely stays consistent. I hope it drops between now and that end, but more than likely, with a lot of issuers trying to accomplish the similar thing in a shortened time period, it may take slightly higher interest rates to get the bonds sold, and that cuts into the savings. But we just recommend, we don't ever want a blank check. We like to have a floor as to savings. We think that 3 percent is an industry standard. That's quite a bit of movement. I'd say that's maybe 15, 20 basis points. That's a pretty significant move. That could happen this December if we get a glut, but we're hoping not. We're hoping.
Have you got any indication that there's a glut coming?
We expect it. I know Junction City has got $105-million bond issue that they're trying to do in the same period of time, but nationally, we're just, we're a relatively small state compared to others. And usually, we're an $8 billion a week marketplace. I think our trading desk maybe expect that that volume will be twice that and maybe more. If it's a lot more than that, then we've got a challenge. But we'll look, you know, we don't have to have all the bonds sold.
Right.
We have the ability to put them on the shelf. That's a scary circumstance, but we don't want to walk away from a transaction, especially with the quality of issuer that we have here.
And we should have that information by December 11th.
Yes, I think we should know, we'll know what the glut looks like. We get information weekly as to what's planned to be marketed for that point in time. We don't have any indication what's planned for now, the first week in December, or the second week in December, as of yet.
Right.
But we expect higher volume than usual because of exactly what we're talking about here.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. It's probably time to vote. If you'll raise your right hand so I can see it. Looks like it passes 5-0.
Mr. President?
Lynn?
And I should have explained this. I do have a second motion to authorize the staff, so I would move that we authorize staff to negotiate agreement with Springstead, for Springstead to serve as an independent financial advisor for the upcoming advanced refunding and to bring the negotiated agreement to the board as soon as possible.
I have a motion by Lynn and a second by Betty. Any conversation? If you'll vote raising your right hand. Looks like it's 5-0. Anything else? Mike?
Chairman?
So, second.
I've got a motion by Betty and a second by Cheryl to adjourn. If you'd vote, looks like it passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.